This is Baltimore City Council Judiciary Committee. I'm Councilman Eric Castello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. We are joined to my far right, Councilman John Bullock, 9th District, Member of the Committee; Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District, Member of the Committee; to my far left, Councilman Bill Henry, 4th District; Councilman Ed Risinger, 10th District, Member of the Committee; Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee; Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're also joined by Matt Peters to my immediate right, Staff to the Committee; Matt Stegman, representing Mayor Jack Young; Caitlin Young, representing Council President Brandon Scott; Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, who is Vice Chair of the Committee, notified me earlier this morning that she is recusing herself therefore. She will not be participating in this hearing or any subsequent work sessions or voting sessions, and will not be discussing the bill with any of her colleagues. With that, I'm going to briefly turn it over to the bill sponsor, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, for introductory comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee, and all here in attendance. I want to read a couple of excerpts from a December 22nd, 1986 Attorney General opinion on Calvert County Ethics Code matter. It says, "The county's ethics ordinance also requires officials, employees, and candidates for elective office to file statements, quote, 'disclosing any interest or employment, the holding of which would require disqualification from participation in matters involving the county sufficiently in advance of any anticipated action to allow disclosure to the public.'" At the time, it's my understanding that this was a new kind of provision, that conflicts of interests were not necessarily required to be disclosed to the degree to which Calvert County was then seeking to add into their laws, their local laws. And throughout this opinion, there are a couple of other citations of other Attorney General opinions. One that says essentially, "The purpose of financial disclosure is to assure the public of the impartiality and independent judgment of governmental officials." And in order to do so, the laws, such provisions must be liberally construed. And in the closing, one of the second-to-last paragraph of this opinion, it says, "Disclosure is designed to ensure that, quote, 'public officials and employees act with honesty, integrity, and impartiality in all their dealings, and that their private financial holdings and transactions present no conflict of interest between the public trust and private interests.'" It goes on to say, "To limit disclosure requirements to financial information that, on its face, relates to county activities, or to the functions and duties of a particular official or employee, would not guarantee the absence of financial conflicts of interest." I read that as a preface to introducing this bill, because this bill also does something that would be newly precedent-setting in the state of Maryland, requiring that elected officials who own a controlling interest of 30 percent or greater in a business disclose that people having business with that business be disclosed in reports. It is hard to know who or how one might seek, who, how, or when one might seek to hold sway with an elected official, and in the interest of construing liberally and not limiting our disclosures to things that, on the face, have to deal with local municipal business. In the interest of that, I think that we should err on the side of greater disclosure. And I say that with respect to the question of whether or not we should feel empowered or feel that we have good cause to simply look at somebody who is spending significant amounts of money with a business that is owned by an elected official. This, of course, I have referred to topically as the Healthy Holly loophole whereby an elected official who has to disclose that they have a business, or receives gifts of a certain amount, does not have to disclose whether or not they are, what is, what amount of money is coming through the business that they own, only that they have the business. The other significant provision of this bill is in voters' interests in being able to have financial disclosures available prior to a primary election. We have upon us in a number of months, an April, I believe it's 28th, a primary election, and a filing disclosure deadline that is two days later. It is, in my opinion, a disservice to the public to have such information come out only after the public has made their decision on whether or not to reelect incumbent officials. The public, I believe, would be better served by having that information available in advance. There is a Law Department report on this, which I'm looking forward to their comments on, and which we have discussed in advance of this hearing. So, and some of my concerns there have been alleviated. There is also a suggestion of an amendment from the Greater Baltimore Committee that may come up, we may discuss at some point. And I myself have put forth an amendment that addresses significant concerns that have been raised by individuals, as well as bill reports. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for hearing this bill and for allowing me to introduce.
Absolutely. We'll start with finance. I don't have an agency comments report, I don't think. We do have one, I apologize, Bob.
... minimal change to the process of argument.
Got it. Board of Ethics?
The Board of Ethics, there's a new requirement. The Board had two concerns. One was about the low threshold, and one was about some confidentiality concerns. I believe that there's going to be amendments in the offing to address those, so we support it.
Excellent. So you support the bill if it's amended to address those two concerns?
Absolutely.
Got it. Thank you. Department of Law?
Good morning. Elena DePita from the Law Department. The Law Department has submitted a report to the Committee. I'd like to start off by saying that I did make an error in my report regarding the filing deadline. I misread the wording, and so I think that the provision, we have no objection to the change in the filing deadline as stated in the bill. I just wanted to point out that COMAR does require that the bill be submitted to it at some point, not necessarily before enactment, but for determination whether it meets the requirements of the sub-type of COMAR and the state government article, not state government article, the Ethics Code provisions and the General Provisions article. So whatever I say here today is subject to the review by the State Ethics Commission. The major concern that I've raised in here is about whether or not the confidentiality requirements, the lack of confidentiality requirements in the bill are, make it somehow not responsive to the city, to the state law, in being at least as stringent as. I refer to a section that's actually in Subtitle V of the bill, which deals with conflicts of interest. And I know that we are not necessarily under the code required to conform to that section. I feel it's an important thing to look at, because it actually involves reporting sources of income, and it's more similar to this bill than the provisions of the Financial Disclosure State Law provisions. And I just wanted to point out that in those provisions, there is a small measure of protection for the third party who is doing business with a entity that is owned in part by an elected official. It doesn't completely isolate that information. It requires that it still be filed, and that it be available in the offices that keep that type of information for inspection. But it does limit dissemination of that information via the Internet. So I think that is somewhat of a compromise to the wholesale disclosure of people's private financial information to the public in general. I think it's interesting that, you know, we were talking about erring on the side of greater disclosure, so elected officials, why not put the burden on elected officials to disclose publicly in some way to, at the place these entities are doing business, either orally or with some sort of disclosure document that people have to sign when they are doing large transactions? And that this business is owned by, partially owned by, a public official or elected official, and that their information may be subject to disclosure on that official's financial disclosure statement. And in that way, we can actually prevent the transactions that may be illicit from happening, instead of having like a gotcha moment when someone looks at someone's financial disclosure statement. So I also note that in Section 5606, there is prohibition against the disclosure of individuals' home address, which I think is necessary to put into our law, because that is a requirement of the state financial disclosure laws. So if we don't have that, we're being less stringent. And I think I've said my piece with respect to the third-party information. Not all transactions of third parties with a entity that's partially owned by an elected official are going to be relevant to conflicts of interest. It could, you know, there's lots of people out there that are just doing business in their everyday life, have nothing to do with influencing what's happening in a local or state government. So there's, you know, there's innocent people's financial information that may, you know, that shouldn't be disclosed without some consideration. So the Law Department basically would like to see some additional work to try to consider those concerns and fix the couple of things that need to be fixed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything, or are you good?
I appreciate the Law Department's acknowledgement, specifically that the state code does not actually require that we be, that we meet or exceed the requirements of Article Title V, Subtitle V, or Section 5, but only 5-6. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Councilman.
Okay, thank you. So while the bill report says another issue raised by the bill is whether it is at least as stringent as the requirements of the General Provisions Articles Title V and 6, it's, we're not, the state law does not actually require us to be as stringent as Title V, only, sorry, as Title 6, only Title V, and then even within Title V, only subsection 6, not subsection 5.
I will be happy to modify, to send you a revised report, so that can be made clear.
I don't personally have any other comments, specifically.
Sounds good. So you're going to send a revised report? Okay, excellent. We have public testimony versus Tiara Bradford? Please and thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Good morning.
Can you hang on one second, ma'am?
I just want to acknowledge my neighbor and constituent, Deborah Mason. Thank you so much for being here today.
Please continue, ma'am.
Good morning. Chair Castello, Members of the Judiciary. My name is Tiara Bradford, and I am Policy Manager for Common Cause Maryland. We support this bill because we believe it will help prevent conflict of interest amongst elected officials in Baltimore City by requiring they disclose their private business clients' and customers' receipts for which they have paid over the required threshold, and also we support the advanced disclosure. The need for heightened transparency in Baltimore City is more urgent now more than ever. This bill aims to close the loophole that permitted the former mayor to pocket thousands of dollars without the public's knowledge. Those business dealings also created a conflict of interest, as many of those clients had business before the council. Specifically, this bill will close the loophole by helping the public determine conflict of interest and special external influence on decision-making by elected officials who have business. And also, it will hopefully deter future corruption. If the city wants to rebuild public trust in local government, transparency is going to be vital. More financial disclosure will build public confidence, and public confidence leads to increased civic engagement. Baltimore's elected officials make important decisions that impact everyone in this city, and therefore it is only fair that the people of this city have every opportunity to hold their elected officials accountable. An ethical and transparent government is necessary to build voter trust and confidence in the political process, and we believe this bill is part of the solution, and we urge a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Deborah Mason?
Good morning, Chairman Castello, and Members of the Judiciary Committee, Members of the audience, Members of the city government. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify this morning. My name is Deborah Mason, and I am a resident of Baltimore City. It is my honor to testify in support of two proposed bills to the current law regarding ethics in the city government. I believe that both bills are necessary to help prevent another humiliating stain to the city like the Healthy Holly scandal. I doubt that it is necessary to remind the Members of the Committee of the particulars of that sad episode in the city's history. Suffice it to say, every aspect of the Healthy Holly scandal tarnished the reputation of the city, its government, and its citizens. We were the butt of a national joke. Worse, we were left to wonder what deals were made as compensation for those payments, and what city resources were squandered as a result. In response to that scandal, I wrote an opinion article published in The Sun, in which I pointed out how fortunate Baltimore was that it had an active local press. The local media brought to light former Mayor Pugh's self-dealing. Without the diligence of The Brew and The Sun, it is quite possible that interested parties would still be buying nonexistent copies of a poorly-written literary three-card Monty. However, it is unwise and unnecessary to rely upon the local press to ensure the ethical behavior of Baltimore's elected officials. The press has only so many resources to spend upon investigative journalism. Furthermore, it is unlikely that Healthy Holly is a unique example of unethical self-dealing, although it is by far the most notorious. No. The city needs to take responsibility for ensuring that its officials act as ethical public servants who are concerned with the public interest and not their own. Therefore, I wholeheartedly support Bill Number 19-0378, which appoints the Inspector General to be the Executive Director of the Board of Ethics. Having the Board of Ethics headed and staffed by the Independent Office of the Inspector General will assure the citizens of Baltimore of its fairness and impartiality.
Ma'am, we're going to ask you to limit your testimony to the bill in question today. It would be inappropriate to-
Oh, I thought this was the bill in question. That was on-
4507.
4507, okay. Well, I also support Bill 0457.
Thank you.
In fact, I have more things to say. Which requires elected officials to report any payments greater than an aggregated amount of $20 made to a business entity in which they have a 30 percent or greater interest, even if that entity does not do business with the city. This amendment would go a long way towards preventing the kinds of payments made in the Healthy Holly scandal. However, I wonder if it goes far enough. Non-elected city officials currently are not allowed to have an interest in entities governed by or doing business with the city, but I am not aware of any reporting requirements similar to the one provided for by the proposed legislation. Similarly, since payments to family members could benefit a public official, it might be prudent for the official to report any such business entity in which a close relative has a substantial interest. Such reporting is similar to financial disclosure and conflict of interest requirements in private industry, including Northrop Brumman, whose disclosure form I have attached to my testimony. I would therefore urge the Committee to consider amending 19-0457, to require elected and non-elected officials to make these disclosures for themselves and on behalf of their family members. With these provisos, I support the proposed legislation as necessary to the creation of a more open and ethical city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you can give that to Matt. Patricia, Patricia S., I want to make sure I don't mispronounce it, ma'am.
Chairman Castello, Members of the Committee. Chairman Castello, Members of the Committee. Councilman Dorsey, thank you for inviting me to speak today about financial disclosure of public officials. My remarks are going to be very personal, as contrary to some of the more representative speakers today, but nevertheless, they're very heartfelt, and I hope that you pay close attention. My name is Patricia Schultzeis. I currently live on 6 Upland Road, Baltimore, 21210. I believe, Councilman Dorsey, that you invited me to speak in support of this bill because you read an op-ed piece of mine published in The Baltimore Sun. I wrote it in response to the now infamous Healthy Holly scandal. In it, I expressed my outrage at the then-mayor's greed, in her mendacity, and her blatant disregard for her oath of office. Baltimore is my chosen home. I grew up in Bridgeport, Connecticut, but in 1965, I came here to teach. A week after I arrived in Baltimore, I had my first date with the man I married. Baltimore is where I fell in love, where I raised my children, and where I chose to remain when my husband died. Quite simply, Baltimore has given me untold wonderful things, and it is a city I love. So despite the former mayor's pleading guilty and her likely prison sentence, even now, I feel gravely betrayed. Crimes like hers reverberate and cause harm to Baltimore in ways we will never know, in the conventions that chose to go elsewhere, in the investors who chose to put their money elsewhere, in the entrepreneurs who chose to establish their businesses elsewhere, and in myriad other ways that will enhance other cities and the lives of their citizens, ways that might have enhanced Baltimore. But the former mayor's greed created a scandal that was slathered over the front pages of newspapers and broadcast over the nation's airways, while elsewhere, other cities were seizing the opportunities that might have been ours. We may be able to calculate the amount by which Catherine Pugh benefited herself, but the amount that would have benefited Baltimore, and which went elsewhere, will forever remain incalculable. That is the true tragedy of Healthy Holly. Will the proposed financial disclosure bill assure that our elected officials are forever free from such greed in the future? Of course not. Elected officials are only human, and greed sadly is endemic to the human condition. But financial disclosure may give them pause. I ask myself whether or not I would be comfortable disclosing so much, whether I would want my financial circumstances to be part of the public record. Would I want my financial transactions disclosed? The answer is, I don't know. Confronting myself with those questions gave me cause, as well it should. No one is forced to run for public office. It is a choice freely given, and it is a responsibility freely assumed. If knowing they must disclose more about their finances, Baltimore's elected officials may think twice about whether or not running for, holding public office for them is a good thing. Thinking about how much they are revealing about themselves may also prompt them to think further about the trust their fellow citizens have invested in them, and about the duties and responsibilities of their office. In short, people holding public office in Baltimore may think about the people who elected them. Therefore, I support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have four amendments, which are... Councilman Henry?
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to ask questions of the agencies from their reports.
Please proceed.
I had a question for Mr. DeFranco about the report from the Board of Ethics. I understood that there were concerns that the $20 threshold was too low. Could you expand on that? Did the Board itself suggest a higher threshold?
They didn't. What they suggested was that whatever the threshold is, should be commensurate to the public interest. And I'll give you an example. If an elected official has a coffee shop as a secondary gig, would the public be concerned about the person that goes into that coffee shop every day and buys a cup of coffee on his or her way to work? Because certainly, over the aggregate of the year, that would go over $20. Conversely, should the public be concerned if all of a sudden this coffee shop received some higher amount that was sort of an aberrant amount, I'll call it? And the Board didn't want to articulate what that number was, they felt that that probably was better placed with the policymakers, yourselves.
Well, the reason I ask that is, I have often had conversations with people who questioned the $20 threshold for reporting of gifts, and how that seems to be a very low threshold, and it, you would not think that somebody's choices legislatively would be swayed by something in the $20 range. But I have always explained it to people as it's deliberately low to make certain that you're disclosing as much as possible. And so that's why I'm questioning the Board's apparent suggestion that the threshold be heightened, or raised, I guess, because I'm looking at it from the perspective of a $20 gift, you know, something that is just simply a gift. gift, you know, something that is just simply a gift, as opposed to buying a $20 item from a retail business when, if, if, if as a, if as an elected official, you have an interest in a retail business, when that retail business sells something that's worth $20, you don't benefit $20 worth. You know, you, you benefit whatever the actual net profit is on that sale. But that's where I'm looking at, if we were going to try to keep these somewhat even, it would seem that the threshold should be where the amount of actual profit received would be approaching the $20 range. Because that's the point at which now you are actually benefiting the elected official by choosing to give them your business. And so what I'm wondering is, does that make sense that the threshold for how much someone is paying the entity in which the elected official has a substantial interest, should that be something relative to the $20 range?
Councilman, the, the sponsor's already suggested that we change the threshold.
Well, that's why, that, that actually sparked it, because I read this letter here from the GBC where they were supporting an amendment to increase the threshold to $5,000. And that was why specifically I was asking if the Board of Ethics had suggested that number, and I understand now that they did not suggest a specific number. I'm just trying to understand the jump from 20 to 5,000, which seems substantially-
That'd be a question for the sponsor.
Okay.
But if I can adjust one point or a couple of points. I, I think if you asked the Board, they would not view a gift as the same thing as business receipts. Business receipts presumably are ongoing throughout the year. A gift presumably is not something that you would receive every day. And I would just say one other thing, that the Board, previous to my employment with the city, has taken a position that the $20 threshold for gifts was too low. And they actually tried to raise it by regulation and the State Commission smacked them down, so.
Oh, okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, there are four amendments on your desks. We're going to entertain the first two. Amendment number one deals with the threshold, changing it to $5,000 or 10% or more of the gross income of that entity. Is there a motion to move this amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Bullock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett. All those in favor of this amendment say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. On page two, there is amendment dealing with confidential information. Nothing in this section is meant to require the disclosure of any information that is otherwise confidential by law. Is there a motion to move that amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Bullock. Is there a second? Second by Pinkett. All those in favor of this amendment say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. There are two other amendments which we will not entertain today. One has to do with an update to the bill based on what's required by Comar. And then the second has to do with a exempting all transactions unless the elected official knows or has reason to know that the person's a lobbyist, a person regulated by the city, or a person doing business with the city. And then lastly, there's an amendment by GBC. And we will ask Matt if he could reach out to Don Fry and ask him to have that amendment, or Tony, if you could have that amendment drafted for the committee's consideration. I can give you the committee report. That cuts out the middleman and the other middleman. So with that, we are going to go into recess. We will schedule a subsequent work session in the very near future. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.